Counselman.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. And attended today, we of course have myself, Chair of the Committee, representing the 4th District, got Councilman Burnett, representing the 8th District, Councilman Cohen, representing the 1st District, Councilman Costello, representing the 11th District. And I know Councilwoman Ramos will be joining us soon. All members of the Committee, representing the Office of the President, I've got Mr. Preston in the back. And representing the Mayor's Office, got—
Adam Abadear.
Sorry, Adam. Had a brain fart. So this afternoon, the Committee will start with a hearing on Bill 22-0255, the Arson Offender Registration, for the purpose of requiring an individual who has been convicted of a specified crime to regularly register certain information with the Police Commissioner of Baltimore City, specifying location, timing, content, and form for the registration, defining certain terms, and generally relating to the arson offender registration. This bill was introduced on July 25, 2022, and it was sponsored by Councilman Burnett. And I'll open the floor to Councilman Burnett, who's with us virtually. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Am I coming in okay?
Yeah.
Are you able to hear me?
We can hear you. If you could speak up, that might help us a little bit.
Okay. So over the last four years, there has been a series of concentrated fires intentionally set in neighborhoods across the city with an uptick particularly in West Baltimore. And during an investigative hearing held last year that examined this topic in greater detail, we learned that over the last decade, there have been approximately 2,400 cases of arson in Baltimore City. Currently in 2022, there have been approximately 68 arsons committed, but only 10 people have been arrested and charged. Arsons destroy more than just buildings. They devastate communities, resulting in the decline of economic development, increased insurance premiums, financial hardships for residents, loss of business revenue, and decreased property values. The United States Department of Justice states that the leading motives for arson are revenge, insurance fraud, vandalism, and the concealment of other violent crimes. So the intended purpose of this legislation is to provide the Police Department with an investigative tool to help them solve open cases and to create a system that tracks and monitors offenders convicted of this crime. Because one of the things that we know is that it is a type of crime that is often repetitive. Arsonists often have a usually higher than an average recidivism rate. So it's likely that they'll act multiple times. Arson is a citywide problem that calls for a citywide solution, and I would appreciate my colleagues' support and looking forward for a thoughtful discussion on this topic. Mr. Chair, I did want to lift up that we are still working with the Police Department on this bill. I have amendments that are not drafted yet that we will be requesting for consideration at a future hearing. And if you'd like, I can go through those now if you want me to hold off.
We can start off with the agency reports, and then we'll come back to the amendments. I understand you have a couple for review.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman. We will go on to agency reports, and we're going to start off first with the Police Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Committee, for the record. My name is Michelle Wurzberger. I'm the Chief of Staff for the Baltimore Police Department. I just want to say thank you to Councilwoman Burnett and his Chief of Staff, Kimmy, for talking with us about this, for hearing our concerns, working with us, and most definitely for the Councilmen's leadership on this issue. You know, we appreciate always you all thinking it through, thinking about ways that we can be doing our job differently, more effectively for the public. And I, in my letter to the Council, I outlined the amendments that we had discussed yesterday. If you want to come back to me or to the Councilman, happy to do either, but either way, we are supportive of the bill with the amendments that we had agreed upon. Councilman, I did, in the letter, add one additional non-consequential amendment, which was the bill requires the Police Commissioner to sign these registrations, and I just suggested that perhaps we add language saying "or commissioners designate." That way, we have a little bit of flexibility.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, we've got the City Solicitor.
Hello, Mr. Chair. Hillary Ruley, on behalf of the Law Department. We noted a few legal issues with the bill, and we proposed amendments that would fix them briefly. The bill as it is is likely unconstitutionally under-inclusive. It's only requiring registration of someone that got convicted in Baltimore City and not, for example, an arsonist who was convicted of these same crimes in Baltimore County. So we just expanded that. We removed the reference to the Administrative Procedure Act because that doesn't really apply to BPD, just like with the Gun Offender Registry, that's not in there. And then we removed the conflict with the state's data sharing laws. The state would pretty much permit all of the same types of data sharing that's contemplated here, with the exception of perhaps sharing within city government. But that, again, shouldn't be an issue because, you know, what's contemplated here for the police to benefit from this is still permitted. So with those three amendments, we would approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. I will turn it back over to Councilman Burnett. Actually, before I do that, any questions from any members of the Committee for the Agencies? Seeing no questions. Oh, also, I want to acknowledge Councilwoman Ramos and Councilman Glover have joined the meeting.
Sure.
And I want to turn it back over to Councilman Burnett to talk through some of the amendments that you've been working on in the bill.
Yes, so in addition to what the Law Department has described, that will be taken up, we will be also drafting amendments that do—there's three things. In addition to what Michelle Wurzberger already mentioned, the registry—we're going to make a change that would make the—so that the registry would allow folks to be charged —or the registry would apply to those offenders who are charged with their second arson-related offense, so first-time offenders would not be included in the registry. But if there are repeated offenses, we felt that that fit in line with the pathology of the crime, that arsonists tend to be repetitive in nature in their actions. So the second or more offenses, this would apply to. We're modifying the list of qualifying offenses by removing a few of the elements—the threat of arson, burning of trash, which are on page two, so numbers six and seven—we will be taking out as far as the types of things—the types of arsons that would trigger the required registry. And again, would be multiple instances of those types of crimes. And we've modified—the sorry—we modified the check-in requirements from every six months and 20 days to annually. Again, there was concerns within the Police Department about capacity to manage this and manage the check-ins, and so we would—we agreed to make them less frequent to address the capacity concerns. And there were—what we already heard from BPD as far as their additional amendments from Michelle. The BPD also agreed to incorporate a carve-out in the new RMS system that specifically highlights arson-related offenses, which would assist with investigations regardless of the unit that's investigating the case. And this sort of came up in conversation that not every—that there's someone that could be have committed a type of arson, but the case is a domestic violence case, which would be investigated by a different unit, and so this would make it a little easier if it's not just only arson for other units to be able to search as well. And then we're also still in conversation with BPD on establishing a reasonable implementation period for the bill itself, and so that'll be a change that will be forthcoming at a future hearing. Mr. Chair?
Awesome. Thank you, Councilman Burnett. Any questions? Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Councilmen, for bringing this to us. Obviously, I just had a major arson in my district over the summer, so this is an important issue. I was looking at the clause around the sharing that obviously it wouldn't be a public registry. It would be something that law enforcement and city agencies have. So for instance, if the person that did what they did in our neighborhood was on—you know, could have been or might be—I mean, I guess the Police Department and the investigators would go through the registry to see if there was somebody that might have done it? Like, I'm just trying to figure out how the—what the interplay is with the agencies as—and the—I mean, I think it's important to do. I just was wondering how that would—how that would play out.
I'm going to defer to the Police Department to talk a little bit how they investigate and how they currently use the system they have now with Lotus Notes. I don't want to misspeak on their investigative tools.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Madam Councilwoman. So with our Lotus Notes, we already can do—we have search features. So say, for instance, if we have identified a person of interest or a suspect, or we're making arrests, we can use that database to already search those individuals to see if they have prior cases, if they have any other cases that is in Lotus Notes, not only particularly to arson, but to any other crimes that we may be investigating. So we do have that capability to check, to see if that individual has been involved in other arsons and other crimes as well.
So that's only if there was a person of interest, let's say.
If we've already—
We'll take the fire in my district as a result—as an example. We don't have anybody yet. But if we did, you would then check the registry to see if that person might have already been involved in arson before and then could sort of verify that, yeah, this is an issue.
Yes.
Does it work in the reverse?
Yes.
Where—okay.
So now, say they're new to our system or new to some of the investigations that now we are conducting, we can also now enter them as that person of interest that will sit in that database and still always make that connection or correlation to that case particularly, but also be able to populate for us to look at for other cases.
So would you also go into the registry and say, hey, this guy did or person did the arson, and it looks a lot and sounds a lot and smells a lot like this one?
Absolutely.
Right? So why don't we ask them something? So it's all of that in terms of—
Yes.
Okay.
No different than how we may investigate, say, robberies. If we've identified someone and we recognize that that MO is similar to some other patterns that we may have had or some other incidents that we may have had, we'll also use them, go out, have a communication, see if we can identify them to be connected to that incident, and then investigate it out until we can prove or disprove that that person was involved.
Right, because it sounds like, just based on all of the reading I have now been doing on arson, that it's usually repeaters every once in a while. And so it's kind of important to have all of that information so that we can try to get to the bottom of it, because our clearance rate isn't that good, right? I mean, just nationwide, arson clearance rates are not good. So any tools that we can have would be—
Agreed.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other questions about the amendments? All right. We'll move on to public testimony. If we have anybody joining us virtually, please use the raise hand function, and we'll make sure to acknowledge you. No one signed up for—to testify. If you do have an interest—I don't see many folks from the public here—but please do feel free to come forward if you have any testimony on the bill. All right, seeing no public testimony, we are going to put this bill in reassess. Councilman Burnett, I'll give you an opportunity to close out any closing statements.
Just thank the folks at the Police Department for working with us on this and the Mayor's Office as well, to try and make sure that we come up with something that works, fits their capacity, and can also help us with, you know, addressing the clearance rate concerns and hold folks accountable for these heinous crimes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. All right. Next, the Committee will hear LO 21-0006, Quarterly Crime Stats and Violence Prevention Plan, for the purpose of the Committee holding a hearing quarterly to review crime statistics for the Police Department and to monitor the progress of the biennial Violence Prevention Plan. This bill was introduced March 8, 2021, by myself, Councilman Conway, and I'll say we're here今天我们 here today for our latest oversight hearing with the Baltimore Police Department to drill into the crime stats and trends that we've been seeing. And today, I've asked the Department to come with a special focus on the summer that's now concluding, violent crime, especially homicides and shootings. But before we dive in, I'm going to start by acknowledging and congratulating a couple of members of the Department. Our new Deputy Commissioner of the Compliance Bureau, Eric Melonson, who is not here today; the new Chief of Staff of the Department, Michelle Wurzberger; the new Deputy Commissioner of the Administrative Bureau, Cherie Briscoe; and the Deputy Commissioner of the Operations Bureau, Richard Warley. So I just want to acknowledge you guys and appreciate you guys for your work. This has been, of course, another tough summer for many neighborhoods, residents, and families across the city. Homicides and shootings hurt the victims who are injured and the families who are killed or injured, but they also cause harm and cause ripples through our neighborhoods and communities. People lose their sense of safety. They're less likely to enjoy their neighborhood, to let their kids outside to play, to connect with their neighbors, and to patronize local businesses. And I'm interested today to learn from the BPD whether or not the strategies that we heard about heading into the summer, whether they had an effect on certain communities. That includes our Group Violence Reduction Strategy, the adjusted deployment plans, the short-term crime plan that was requested by the Council in early June. My colleagues and I have asked it before, and I'll continue to ask it until we see measurable progress, but we want to know what's working, what's replicable, what isn't working, what the barriers are holding BP that BP BPD back, and what the Council and BPD leadership can do about those barriers. The people of Baltimore that we were elected to represent and that every police officer in Baltimore takes an oath to serve are concerned, angry, disillusioned, scared. And though I'm sure none of us need to be reminded of this, we all must continue to exude a strong sense of urgency each and every single day. The lives of our residents hang in the balance, and they're counting on us to show results. So with that, I want to turn things over to the Police Department for any remarks in our presentation today.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Committee, again, for the record. Michelle Wurzberger, Chief of Staff for the Department. Thank you very much for acknowledging all of the many staffing changes that have occurred in the last couple of weeks. It's been quite something, but we're all eager and ready to really do good, continue to the work that we've been doing. Before I turn it over to our new Deputy Commissioner, I just want to acknowledge, normally for these oversight hearings, the Commissioner is here, we have the entire executive team, but the Commissioner is traveling today, that's why he's not present. And since we had a very limited focus, I thought it was better for the executive members to be doing what they do instead of sitting here if they didn't have a formal role. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our able Deputy Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the Committee. First, I want to introduce the—first, I want to introduce the members of the professional staff that are here with me today. We have Colonel Jones, who's Overseas Patrol Chief of Patrol. Lieutenant Colonel Herzog is Assistant Chief of Patrol. Lieutenant Colonel Monique Brown has taken over my role as Acting Chief of Criminal Investigation. You all know Michelle. We have Amanda Krotke from PIO. Lindsay Eldridge, luckily I turned around and you snuck in on me, from PIO. Leslie Blythe Parker—I can't remember that—the hyphen name gets me—from Equity Officer. And Shannon Conway, who has taken over for Michelle in her old role. So first of all, start off—we're going to start off with a few brief slides, and then we're going to talk about some of the things that went well and where we are as of today. During that time, I'm going to rely a lot on my other sworn members, especially for the patrol portion. But as we go through, you'll see the Summer Deployment Plan update was increased warrant apprehension. I'll get into some more details about each one of these—the high visibility patrols and the harbor deployment. Basically, we'll go right into the summer highlights. The WATF unit over the summer served a total of 560 warrants. Now, this is particularly, I guess, a huge increase, not in the amount that we've served, but the types of warrants that we serve, and the fact that our units have—our WATF unit has lost several members over the summer to retirement, resignation, and some of them have moved on to other positions. But you'll see 560 warrants, 15 murder warrants, 18 non-fatal shooting warrants, and I'm not going to go in and read every one of those, but those are just some of the highlights. And something else with WATF, not just over the summer, but so far this year, they've served 400 more warrants this year than they did at this time last year. And that was all with battling rates of attrition. But we did that with some of the warrant initiatives that we were able to use from the money that was given to us from the Governor, the Governor's Office. So we'll move on to the Summer Deployment Highlights, increase in arrests. We went up 12% in overall adult arrests. A lot of those were partly because—it was mainly handguns. We got a 15% increase in handgun arrests—I mean, 15% handguns recovered, 40% in handgun arrests, along with your downtown deployment. We, on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays—we're seeing a lot of issues downtown on Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays. We deployed several officers to the downtown corridor. What we did—when we did that, we did see some displacement. So then we had to move them to different parts of the city while still keeping the downtown in order. And when we did that, we saw a lot of our complaints went away from the downtown area. We did get a few in some of the other areas. That's when we adjusted our deployment, moved them to different places like Fells Point and Federal Hill to combat some of those problems. In addition to that, there are ghost guns, the seizure, that's a huge issue in the city. We seized 355 ghost guns this year compared to only 318 already last year. So that's a big increase. And then, again, back to the attrition rate, we lost 92 sworn members over the summer to retirement, resignation, or termination. So this is all being done while also we had several very major events that occurred in the city where the city shined. We had the Preakness. I believe AFREM came back for the first time in several years. We had—we just got huge kudos for the Maryland Cycling Race that basically scanned our city multiple times. The Mayor's Summer Lit Series, we deployed to that and had a great turnout. The 12-miler. And then you can't forget, the Orioles started playing really well again, brought a lot more people downtown, and our downtown officers had to deal with the after crowds, and they did a fabulous job with that. So moving on, I'll go into—I know we want to talk about homicides. We had a slight increase in homicides during the summer months. The main key, though, is since the summer has ended officially, I guess Labor Day, as of today is the first time in about five or six months that we are one down in homicides. At some point during the summer, we were 21 homicides above last year's total. And that wasn't very long ago. That was actually on August the 12th. So in a little more than—a little less than a—little more than a month, we went from 21 homicides up to one homicide down. Now, non-fatal shootings, and now—not—we are not celebrating that number because it's still 254 lives and 254 more citizens that we lost, and every one is a tragedy. But we are making some progress in the homicides thus far. Non-fatal shootings, at one point during the summer, we were up 56. We are up 36 right now, and we're making progress this month. We've had a—we've had a pretty good month. We hope to continue through the end of the month and through the fall and into the holiday season. But we also know the holiday season brings challenges with robberies and the shopping season. So several of those things—I don't have anything else to present right now, so I'll just open it up to questions for anyone.
I have a bunch of questions. I'll start with two before I hand it over to my colleagues. So first, we know that there was a recent change of guard, so I'm curious, how does the recent Full Earth Command changes change the Department's operations and affect the crime fight? I can imagine that some of these changes, of course, have an impact and are intended to have an impact. I'm just kind of curious how we've thought about that first.
It hasn't changed the crime fight. Our crime fight—the Commissioner put out a crime plan. It's a crime plan that we're going to stick to, and we're going to continue to move it. I don't expect anything to change, just everybody's still on the bus, the seats just changed a little bit because Deputy Commissioner Gillis moved on to another opportunity. We just have to move seats and fill in. We're going to—we're going to interview and backfill my position. We're going to be moving—obviously, that creates a ripple effect because either Lieutenant Colonel or Major move into my position, and it creates issues of moving people around. But we do that every single day, and we continue to do it and continue to push forward with the crime plan. But nothing's going to change in the crime fight.
Okay, so we don't expect any slowdown or—
No.
We think we can handle it all?
Absolutely not. The officers—the officers have never slowed down. With the—with the work that the men and women have put out this year, our arrests are up, our felony narcotic arrests are up year-to-date, and the men and women of BPD have done a fabulous job over the summer. And I know we're going to talk about homicides a little bit and non-fatal shootings. Our homicide clearance rate has gone up slightly, ever so slightly. I think it's less than 1%, but one of the things that the homicide unit has dealt with is they've had turnover of 17 detectives this year. Part of it was a very good thing. We had six of them promoted, and one of the sergeants promoted, and then we have several who've retired and moved on to other—to other things in their life. So we celebrate those, we celebrate the promotions, but what that causes is we backfill those spots. And when we backfill them, it takes about five to six months for a homicide detective to get trained. But even with all that transition, the men and women of the homicide team have done a really good job to build the clearance rate. And we do that through a—basically through hard work, but we also have CID stat, and I agree—the reason I bring that up is Lieutenant Colonel Herzog was in CID stat with Deputy Commissioner Briscoe when they built CID stat. So when he moved over to patrol, he built it in the non-fatal shootings, and it's just getting up and running, and their shooting clearance rate has gone up a little bit. We expect both of those just to continue. Just—it's ever-changing seats in the Department, but the mission is still the same, the crime plan's still the same, and we'll keep moving forward.
Thank you. I appreciate that. My second question has to do with the Group Violence Reduction Strategy. So how do we—how do we think we're doing with the Group Violence Reduction Strategy? Is it working, number one? And then, two, you know, the work—the team that we've got in the Western District is very robust. I'm not sure if that is scalable, and I want to hear from you guys how we think about scaling that strategy, showing it's either success or lack thereof, and sort of your perspective on—
I think—I don't want to get too optimistic, but the Western District, I believe it's going very well. Western District is down 33% in homicides, down 22% in non-fatal shootings, and their overall robberies are down 15%, and their overall Part I violent crime is down 6%. We have a great relationship with MONC, the State's Attorney's Office. We all—they—we work together on that initiative. We have shooting reviews on Tuesday, so we know who we are going to—to—who is persons of interest in our cases. We give it to our detectives, and they go out and they basically go after the persons who are committing these crimes. But I think optimist—I'm very optimistic about the way it's going, but I don't want to celebrate any success because we still—we still have almost 80 people shot in the Western. It's a big decrease of 25%. So if we can continue that for a year, for the rest of the year, we may—we may end up with 40 or 50 less victims in the Western District, and I think that would be a success.
So to kind of lean a little more into my question, and correct me if I'm wrong here, I remember during the budget hearings, we talked a little bit about the unit that's been helping in the Western District specifically for this strategy. I want to say it's like 40 people. Is that still the case?
Yes, yes. We work with—we work with GVR—Chief MONC, and we do the custom notification letters. I believe—if I'm not mistaken, I'm going off the top of my head, it was like—I think we— we might have done 160 custom, I'll get you those numbers, but they work together when they go out and do the custom notification letters. But we meet multiple times during the week, and everybody comes together on Tuesday morning in the Western, members of all three entities, and we meet and discuss the cases from the previous week and the progress from the week before and continue to do progress. Plus, our GBU team has done a couple of different takedowns in the Western in different spots, and that's what we're looking for with the indictments, to basically get the criminals out of the Western, or out of the city and in jail so they can't harm anyone else.
I'll say this while I'm encouraged about the progress we're seeing in the Western District, of course cautiously. My concern is scaling up the next district, the next district, the next district till we eventually cover the whole city. And I think when I speak to the issue of urgency, we should be thinking about what that means. If we're showing some true progress with this strategy, we need to understand what it takes in order to scale it to the city eventually. Now, I know you guys don't actually control GBRS. It's mostly MONC and you guys partner in that endeavor, but those 40 officers, knowing that we have challenges recruiting, where do we, as we need to expand that unit in order to meet the demand for the GBRS team, how do we anticipate meeting that challenge of filling those slots without compromising the rest of our operations across the city?
That is going to be a big challenge. Now, one part of the strategy that you don't need additional resources for, we've already started moving to other districts, and that's the gun reviews. The Eastern District took it upon themselves to start their own, and we're going to try to replicate that throughout the city. What happens is our GBU team goes and shows them how we do the gun reviews, and they come to the Western to see how they're doing them. And then they can basically replicate that in their districts and start with the gun reviews, because that's one of the biggest, the biggest parts of that is finding out who you're looking for, who are the persons of interest, what groups are involved in the violence, and then trying to extricate those groups.
Okay, thank you. I'll open the floor to questions, and we'll start this way with Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to lobby and say, don't take Major Thacker from me, okay? Please. We just got redistricted into the Eastern, and we absolutely need the best of the best there, so just.
Councilwoman, obviously, we cannot make any promises to that effect, but what I will say is, I think I can speak for the group that is here, that Major Thacker is one of our best and brightest. He is committed not only to providing public safety, but to working with the community, working with our elected officials, making sure people feel heard, making sure that they are a part of the process, and taking, going that extra step, like the things we've talked about, you know, doing the 3-1-ones, looking at the vacant properties. He is absolutely spectacular, and I will certainly pass along the kudos. Thank you.
Yeah, I've already been in conversations with him as well. Just don't take him from us. And so my question is, I just had a triple shooting in my district. The 2900 block, or excuse me, the 1800 block of 29th Street. It was, the neighbors knew it was coming, okay? There's a lot of intelligence that gets transferred to the police department from various sources, I'll just say. And it's been very frustrating that some of our key hotspot areas are still hot. Can you talk a little bit about how we're going to, you know, I get it's a multi-agency approach. I just wrote to the Chief of Staff to say, all right, everybody in the room, we've got to figure this out because I can't have this happening again, because we know it's actually going to happen again if we don't have action. So if you could talk a little bit more about how, or any of you can talk about, you know, how are we going to deal with these kinds of things? Because it is, it's been very frustrating.
I'll start, and then I'll turn it over to patrol if they have anything to add. But basically, what we have to do is, we have, one, basically, I don't want to get into our resources, but we have to, we have to move resources. When we have an area that is hot and that we know had the triple shooting, we have to move resources, but when we move them, we have to take them somewhere else. And that's, that's the constant balancing act that, mainly, I'll turn it over to Kevin Jones, but I'll let him talk about, that's the constant balancing act that patrol has to do in the patrol districts, considering our staffing numbers and our staffing challenges.
Yep. Good afternoon. So as the DC alluded to, so it's always important for us to identify and prioritize specific areas, either it be our microzones or our hotspots. It's indicative upon those district commanders through their analysis, through our dashboards, to figure out when is the best time and place to be there. So be it a Tuesday at 5:00 to 3:00, or 7:00 at night till 10:00. So that's where we use our dashboards for the analytics of putting our officers, using them optimally in those areas. Unfortunately, there's also the opportunity, you know, when officers go from, say, foot to a mobile capacity and they're doing their directed patrols, that they may leave an area for a second because they're, you know, it's a four-block radius or a two-block radius that they have to give some area another part of attention, that individuals will use this opportunity to then harm others. So it's also indicative upon when an officer is leaving the area, making the supervisors and others well aware that, hey, look, this may be a priority area, but I am leaving right now. And if there are camera operators and other things that we can put in place to supplement them, they will. I will also say that it's very, as the DC alluded to, we're looking at that group violence reduction strategy. We have weekly meetings using that same model that is in the Western District, trying to bring the other district commanders up to speed to see that, look, this is working in the Western District, this is how it would work in your district, by identifying those trigger pullers or those crime drivers, those priority individuals, and trying to extract them from the equation of being a victim but also victimizing. So it's two-pronged in that. So also, you know, focusing not only on the summer crime plan, but the theory altogether is identifying not only problematic people but problematic areas. So this is something that we do in a 24-hour period with the deputy chiefs and myself, of questioning the district commanders of what's your priority, how are you prioritizing, how is it being addressed? And if not, then when will it be addressed? So it's a constant monitoring of what's important to you right now based on your resources. Can outside resources, non-committed resources be given to you to supplement you a little bit? And basing the crime fight versus also public safety for major events that a lot of the districts are also trying to balance, the crime fight with resources, but also staffing major events and other things that may be going on in the city.
No, I understand the resource challenges. I think that when information is given to me and I pass it along, it has to be acted on. And not just by the police, but every single agency that we need to get involved. So I'm looking forward to continuing to work on this block, and, you know, we better not see another one. My other question is about how often, and I don't know if you have this data, but how often is it that we're seeing that you've arrested somebody, and then three weeks later, they're back on the street and you have to re-arrest them? That is a strain on your resources. And I'm wondering if there's a way that we can figure out how often that happens to then try to figure out if there's advocacy that we need to do, you know, in other ways? Because that's not your fault that, well, unless there's an evidence issue, but, I mean, I'm trying to figure out what, how often does that happen where somebody was arrested, they're out a couple of weeks later? I know it's different, it's different for juvenile than it is for adults, so there's the same, those types of things as well. Because I think if we can figure out how to make sure folks that are arrested are actually either going through a process to get them out of the life, if you will, and, you know, some that need to stay, you know, because that's a strain on the resources as well. Can you talk a little bit about that?
I can, we can try to get that number, but that's probably going to be almost impossible number. Because we put, our job, not to separate, because it's criminal justice system is all one team, but once we make the arrest, what happens with the court system when they're released really doesn't have any, doesn't have anything to do with us. Our job is just to continue to make the arrests and to try to present good cases to be prosecuted. We can try to get those numbers for you, but we'd have to...
That's the State's Attorney's Office that I need to ask? Okay.
But Councilman, to dovetail on the deputy, I don't want you to think that there is no work being done in Baltimore City. So whether it's a law scene from auto, a stolen auto, a carjacking, a burglary, whatever the case may be, if there was someone who was of interest that was arrested, we are tracking that internally as well amongst the district and then amongst ourselves to say, hey, look, this was a person of interest, this was a suspect, they were arrested, you know, but now they're back out. So then the questions that myself and the deputy chiefs will have is, well then who's watching him? Where's the next possible act of violence going to occur? Are they going to be a victim? Is somebody else going to victimize them? So this is a question that we do have in reference to not letting them fall off the radar for whatever reason if they were let back out.
And if I could just add one more thing, in the last legislative session, this is an issue we worked very, very hard on, actually. And Senator McCray had introduced legislation requiring the state to provide us with notice when someone is being released pre-trial. And that's important to note because many, many of the crimes that folks are being arrested for, they, they're released. And so they are required to give us information. We are still working through the technology to get that notification appropriately, timely, and with all that we need, including where are they being released to, meaning where are they going to live? Because if we are told they're released without information about where they're going, that does not help us. So we are still fine-tuning that. So I think we are on the same page, that communication needs to be had around this, planning needs to be had around this, and we need to deal with those folks who are continuing to recidivate and harm our communities.
And then another thing is, we have our Monday, Wednesday, Friday crime meetings where our intel officers come into the room along with us on Fridays, and we talk about all the cases. The intel officers and several of the detectives, we do track the suspects that we arrest through the system, and we try to find out if they've been released. Most of our intel officers will continually check on them daily if it's someone who's wanted for a shooting, a robbery, homicide, something like that, some of the high-profile cases and some of the more violent cases. We track them to ensure if they are released, we know they're released, and we have a pretty good relationship with the State's Attorney's Office on some of the homicides of what's going to happen with those.
Yeah, and I just want to say one thing, and then I'm done with this round, is, you know, obviously, when people have done their time and they come out, we want to make sure that they're successful. So my, the crux of my question, just to be super clear, was, you know, if someone was arrested three weeks ago and they're out, and like, what's happening there and why? Because the higher chances are that, you know, so again, I just wanted to be clear where I was coming from on that. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
And that's part of the GBRS strategy, is the reentry program portion of it, to help those who are coming back into the community not to recidivate.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I just want to paint a final point on your question, I think it's a good one, with regard to folks, excuse me, the department being notified when folks are let out but not getting an address. I know we did advocate for, I was right there with you, Michelle, advocating for change at the state level to make sure that notification happened. Were we missing a part of it that would allow us to be notified of the address? Is that something we need to go back to the state for?
So we may, we may. We're still trying to work it through. There's also, like I said, a technological issue that we are trying to work through. You know, we're not, we're not the BPD of old where everything's paper and we can't even, you know, operate a computer. So we're getting there, but we're trying, thank you so very much, Colonel. We're trying to work through that. I will certainly let you know if we're going to take a second bite at the apple, but we're trying to work it out cooperatively. We feel very hopeful. We have great relationships with folks at the state, so we're hoping that we can just work it out, but we will keep you updated. Thank you.
Councilman Cohen.
Hey, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Worley and the whole team. In a couple of months, we will have a new State's Attorney. That person has indicated that they will reverse or change some of the policies that the current State's Attorney enacted or implemented. Without placing value judgment on those policies, one of the things that seemed to cause an enormous amount of chaos and confusion is that there was not appropriate communication between agencies on those policies. So hearing from Commissioner Harrison, that he learned about it at a press conference, hearing from officers on the ground that they were uncertain as to when and how to make an arrest based on whether it was going to be prosecuted, had some real negative impacts on crime and violence ultimately in our communities. What are we doing proactively to engage the person that will become State's Attorney in that conversation early? And are those conversations already happening? Because it is really important that our entire law enforcement apparatus understands what we are doing vis-à-vis arrests, prosecutions, and all the way through the chain. So where are we currently, knowing that in a few months, those policies may well be reversed?
Well, I know the commissioner, you can go ahead, the commissioner has communicated with the incoming State's Attorney, and we, there will be meetings to get us on board, get us together with the State's Attorney's Office. Better, I can't say better because there are good relationships there now, but it's going to be a change because you've got a different State's Attorney, different policies.
So, thank you, deputy, and thank you for the question, Councilman. You know, we've talked about this a lot. Communication and relationship is incredibly important in the crime fight, making sure that we're coordinating with the other person, you know, across the street in the State's Attorney's Office. There have been conversations with the incoming State's Attorney. There will be, as he identifies, staff that is going to come along with him. There will also be conversations at that level. And we will be coordinating with his office in terms of what that policy change looks like, both, you know, in terms of implementation on the BPD end. So those are things that are coming. We're aware of it, we are trying to work through it, and we will absolutely, very closely coordinate with his office.
Great. I think my request for you all would be to proactively make sure there is a communication pattern, not just between Commissioner Harrison and State's Attorney-elect Bates, but really all the way down the line. Because I heard a few times that leadership was more or less in sync, whether that was accurate or not, I don't know, but I can tell you, on the ground, officers were very, very confused about what was arrestable, how much of a substance, whether if someone loiter's but then chooses to urinate on property, can they be, I mean, there was just confusion all over the place. And so I guess my question slash request to you all is that we make sure there are protocols put in place proactively so that whatever the decision ultimately is, and hopefully there's conversations before the turnover takes place, that that communication filters down to the folks who are on the front lines.
And so if I could just unpack that just a little bit, because I think you talked about a couple of different things. First that I heard was making sure that it's not just the principals talking, that folks further down the chain, folks who are in responsibility at different levels are interacting. The people who are doing the work have got to coordinate, they've got to communicate, they have to be on the same exact page. And we have lots of different examples of where we can improve, and so we are very, very hopeful, we're excited about a possibility of improvement there. But then the second piece of it is the issue of communication with our members, making sure our members feel confident and comfortable and understand what is expected of them. And so communication in that realm will be very important. Obviously, we have the heads up, we know it's coming, we're working through that so that, you know, we can get our officers ready to... ready to, to act appropriately, sir.
And it's constantly training the officers. And Commissioner Harrison communicates with our officers, he'll, he'll put, put together a little video that tells our officers exactly where we stand and what we're going to do. It's just, it's a big agency to have to get to every single person, but he communicates all the time with our officers through video and in person when he goes to the roll calls. He's constantly visiting the roll calls as we do. And so we, we want that message to be clear, because if we give them the direction the men and women of BPD will do whatever we ask them to do.
And, and as, I was going to say the same thing that the deputy said, that, you know, Commissioner Harrison is going out to the various roll calls as he did with the redistricting plan to try to boil it down so the officers and the citizens would know what was coming. But I will also say that the staff, the, the, what we've put in place is officers at any moment, if there's any confusion on what you have, there is a supervisor. There are multiple levels of supervisors that are there for you to say, this is what I have, what do you think? There is a liaison down with the state's attorney's office down and the booking process, that they can also provide that information to you to say, hey, look, this is what I have, what is the best course of action and I should do. So in the interim, there are mechanisms in place that should ensure a quality arrest that will go through the judicial process.
I appreciate that. And just to be clear, you know, my expectation is not that Commissioner Harrison is going to personally speak to every single police officer in BPD and explain to them one by one the new policy. You all operate through a hierarchical organization that has chain of command. And so I just want to make sure that all the way down, the communication is clear, comprehensive, and that whatever is being communicated from the state's attorney is commensurate and matches what we're saying with BPD.
Well, he, he kind of does that, because the, when, when we do the PowerPoint or the, the video, it goes on Power DMS, and every officer has to sign for it. And they have, they have to listen to it. So whether they, they decide to pay attention to what the commissioners tell them is incumbent upon them. But we put out the clear direction for where we want the officers to go in that Power DMS that you have to sign for, and everyone, including us, to the top of the organization has to accept it and read it within a certain period of time, or listen to it within a certain period of time.
Great. Appreciate that, and look forward, and the next briefing, to hear where we are on that. Just briefly, can we be very, very careful when we are putting out information to council members, to the media, to anyone, that we correctly identify folks, that we don't put the wrong gender on a victim? There have been, in the past, some instances of misinformation. I just want to be really, really, really clear, because obviously it can be damaging for a victim or their family to have misinformation. Just want to make sure that, you know, moving forward, we're being really, really, really careful about information that we put out, that it's accurate.
Yeah, councilman, and, and I, I talked with Shannon earlier, I'm, I'm aware of the current situation that you're discussing. Obviously, if someone is already victimized, we don't want to pile on there. So we, Shannon looped in, our PIO, Lindsay Eldridge, you know, we are definitely working to make sure that when we send stuff out, it's as accurate as possible. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, councilman. Councilman Glover?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for being here this evening. First and foremost, I want to say congratulations to you Deputy Commissioner. I mean, it's, it's long overdue. Watching you do some great work in Northeast when you were the major up there. And I do know that a lot of the officers that patrol are already very, very excited in your new role.
Thank you, sir.
What I want to add to this is that, uh, over in Southeast, there's been uptick in crime between the 400 and the 500 block blocks of Glover Street. Pastors are calling the office, communities calling the office. And what I fear is that because of, we, we are doing, you know, redistricting very, very soon. And like Councilwoman Odette mentioned earlier on, and we've had meetings down at the headquarters, you know, I always talk highly about, you know, Major Thacker and the great work that he's doing in the Eastern District, which I know that soon we'll be losing him. But in Southeast, since, uh, the major, the former major in Southeast, since she's gotten promoted, we no longer have her there, it's, it's kind of hard to build that new relationship with the Southeast. And again, that's why I think we're seeing the series of crimes that are going on in the Southeast part of the district because of, I hope it's not because of new leadership that's over there, but that's why we're seeing the shootings and the, the, you know, the gun violence, whatever it is that's happening over in, like I said, the 400 and 500 block of North Glover Street. What are your plans on tackling that issue as we move forward?
Basically, you have, you, you have a very good major.
Smith.
Tony Smith and the captain, Arnold Jenkins, are very good at what they, at what they do. So they, it is, is it Jenkins?
It's Mattalonis.
Mattalonis, I'm sorry. He's very, very in-depth with investigations. So I actually spoke to Captain Mattalonis. I was thinking, you said Thacker, I was thinking Eastern for Jenkins, but Tony Smith comes very highly respected. He's, he finished, through the promotional process, he was one of the majors that we promoted from captain to major. He got promoted from lieutenant to major going through the process. He's very smart at what he does. He can do the deployment. So he will, he has managed Fells Point, he has managed some of the other areas, the problematic areas in the Southeast. And he'll do the same thing with Glover. They work very, I mean, Glover Street, they work very, very closely, Major Thacker and Major Smith, because they separate only by Monument Street, basically. So they work together on all those different avenues and all those different areas where we have problems. And they'll continue to work together regardless of where the district boundaries lie. It's just we got to get the right resources in the right places. And we will shift that, we'll constantly shift that to address issues as they come. Just continue to give him information about it as we go, as we go through it.
We will. Thank, thank you for that information. Also, we know soon, like in my part of the district, you know, Hopkins are starting to start their police agency and things of that nature. Part of the campus is over in my district. And what I, what we do fear at times is because of the misinformation in the past, when it came from Hopkins, like the Henrietta Lacks, the information that was coming out, that we, a lot of folks in East Baltimore, we just don't trust them. And, and what role would you guys play in their police department to make sure that they're doing the right things that are asked of them to do? Because they're their own agency. They don't, you know, go by the guidelines of Baltimore City Police Department. And again, we do hear that from some of the residents that are in that, that's part of the community, that they fear that, you know, things will be a lot different than having Baltimore City Police Department in the community.
And I'll, I'll turn that over to Michelle, because she's been working with that. But we do have an MOU that's going to be in place with Johns Hopkins when they start the police department, and she can get more in there.
Thank you. And councilman, that's a good question, obviously, especially given where we are, right? Tomorrow night, we'll have a, there will be another town hall at, on the medical campus, after having the, the one last week at the, at the university. And so per the law, they can only start their police department if an, you know, if they have an MOU with the, with the department. That draft MOU is online. If you can't find that, need a copy, happy to send that to you. You know, both Hopkins and BPD are listening to what folks are saying, trying to kind of identify what sort of changes need to be made in order to make sure everyone is comfortable. But there's a couple of kind of overlying themes here. And first and foremost is there are certain standards that we are mandating that they adopt and kind of infuse into their, their own policies. Obviously, they're not going to use ours, but we have, we would be requiring them to essentially adopt tenants in, in a variety of, of those policies. And, you know, and so that, you know, that would encourage them, and it is our goal, to make sure as humanly possible, that Hopkins is adopting certain tenants of the consent decree, use of force, you know, the least intrusive, most effective strategies, those types of things. But that, you know, and certainly, so that is partly our role. Another thing that is really important for everyone to understand is that you will recall, the state changed the law enforcement disciplinary process, right? And so, you know, HB 670, I think it was, it's been a, it's been a while, went into effect July 1. And Hopkins Police is under that law. They are required to submit to that process. So if someone files a complaint, a misconduct complaint against a Hopkins Police Officer, that complaint will be investigated. It will go to the charging committee, which is, will be comprised of residents. And then once that charging committee makes a ruling, depending on how that goes, there will be a trial board that that Hopkins Police Officer will have to submit to if they don't accept the, the, the charge.
Isn't that, isn't that trial board employees of, of Hopkins?
No. So it will be the same exact trial board that any law enforcement agency in Baltimore City will have to submit to. So it essentially is an administrative law judge, it is an officer of equal rank to the officer who has been charged, and a, and a member of the public. So there are three people who will be passing judgment on, on that case. And every agency, so it's sheriffs, Baltimore Police Department, it's Morgan, it's every single, and the, and the law itemizes all of them. Every single officer that is in any of these agencies will have to submit to that. And I don't think that's clear. I don't think people really realize that that was the case, but that is a really important point to note.
And we have a very good relationship. We also, we already have University of Maryland Police, and we have Morgan State University Police Officers that we work very well with as an agency.
And I, and I believe you guys do, but again, I'm going off the footprint that, that they will be patrolling over in East Baltimore. You know, prior to becoming a, a private agency, you know, with Baltimore City Police that patrol, you know, the streets. I'm quite sure you guys will still be in the community, but it, it seems like the community was forced to be under the umbrella of the Baltimore City, excuse me, underneath the umbrella of Hopkins Police Department. These are homeowners that felt like, you know what, you guys are just throwing us, you know, over in Hopkins, where we were here way long before Hopkins decided to establish a police department. And again, a lot of them fear that because of the misinformation and because of the negative conversations that's been out there because of Hopkins in the past, that people just want to make sure that they are really getting the quality of service that they do deserve, and that everything is transparent to them.
And we aren't going to, BPD is still going to be BPD, and we're still going to patrol the areas. So they're just going to supplement us in some of the other areas.
And it's, it's really important to know, I think that's, thank you, DC. The other thing is, you know, there are crimes where we will always be primary, always. Rape, murder, shooting, you know, they may be the first to arrive, just because they're, they're there, they're right there. They may secure the scene, but we will always be primary, always.
And we just had that tragic event at Morgan, where we worked very well with the Morgan Police Department. They actually assisted us a great deal with apprehending that suspect. And we did get him this week, so.
It's a pretty good.
And, and Councilman Glover, as you said, you know, that you and I being Eastside guys, so I grew up in 1700 block of Chase, so which is only a few blocks away from Hopkins. I've heard the same stories and grew up with the same stories you've heard. But I also know that Hopkins has also been unwavering, has always been there and that staple for a lot of us, and is a world renowned hospital. So we have to realize that they're people's perceptions as well, and take them into consideration, but also know the great work that Hopkins has done. I, I will double down on what Michelle said, is that what this does is now providing a force multiplier in that area. So don't think of it as always the negative of what it's bringing. It's now bringing more of a public safety presence in that area, with BPD, as Michelle said, always being the lead agency when it comes to major events.
And I'm, it's not that I'm bringing a negative, you know, energy or anything like that. I'm speaking on behalf of the people. These are, you know, my constituents that reach out to me. And again, some are for, some aren't. And I'm, you just want to bring it, you know, to the floor that you guys, you know, just clearly understand exactly what's been told to me and what's been emailed to me, so that, you know, you guys can, you know, talk amongst, you know, your fellow officers and also with Hopkins. Just let them know these are some of the concerns that we have. And you have that dialogue with them prior to them deploying their whole agency to East Baltimore campus, like it would greatly appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Glover. Still got a bunch of questions here. I'll touch on a couple real quick. I noticed we didn't have the shooting numbers. Do we have those available, shooting numbers compared to last year?
Year-to-date or just for the summer?
Uh, year-to-date is good.
Year-to-date, as of today, we have 556 shootings, as opposed to 520 from last year. And we, we've made progress on Jan, on September the 1st, we were up 52 victims. We've made some progress decreasing the negative. So we went down to, we're up 56, 36 victims. So we've cut off six, we've had six less victims so far this month. And we continue, we hope to continue that trend as the year, the year goes on, because I think we're going to win in both. No pressure to anyone, but I just think, I just think we're going to win both. I think we're going to not win, but we're going to come in reductions.
I sure hope so.
I agree. Currently, we're sitting at 6% above where we, where we need to be compared to 2021. But as the deputy said, we are definitely increasing our decrease. We're slowing down the pace. What we've seen so far of the, of the eight, eight of the nine districts are showing lower numbers this time for this month as compared to last year where they were with non-fatal shootings. So we're starting to address those issues slowly through our scorecard and our DDU stat. We're definitely making those arrests. And so far for the month of September, we have closed six non-fatal shootings, either by arrest or by warrant.
Great. For the, for the first time in a while, our arrests are up. Just, just past weekend, we had 20 handgun violations in the city. The men and women just out there doing what they do, and 20, 20 individuals arrested with guns. And that was just Friday, Saturday, Sunday. That doesn't even count the rest of the week.
That's great to hear. And you, you offered, do we have information for the summer comparison, 2021 versus 2022?
Yes, sir. The non-fadals for the, for the summer of, of this year, we had 245 as opposed to 226 from last month, I mean, last year. That's June 1 to the 15th of, of September.
You said 245 for this year, 226?
226. So it's 19 more this year than last year. And the homicides for that time was 103 to 109.
103 in 2020.
103 in '21, 109 in '22.
Okay. So to, to that end, the reason why I asked that question is because I want to continue to focus on some of the changes and strategies to understand whether or not they worked over the last few months. I, I touched on in my opening statement, of course, our short-term deployment, deployment plan. I, I, at the time when the council asked for that from the department, I think we were significantly up. Can you, can you talk to me about sort of the perception on that plan? Do we think it was successful? And what did that take out of the department? Are there lessons that we can learn that maybe we should implement going forward for consideration?
Our numbers were up slightly, but that doesn't mean it wasn't a success, because we had so many other distractions throughout the city at the time. All the, the men and women that we had to send to all the different events that the city shined in. And our numbers did go up a little bit. But one thing that did go down was overall, overall robberies. We did see increases in carjackings, but our overall robbery numbers went down about 8%. So I think that was one of the biggest things of putting the, the men and women out there in the right places to try to prevent some of these robberies. So that So that was one of the things that I, that I saw when I compared the two sheets, the two EXAM sheets for the summer. And the homicide, it's never a win-win when you, when you have increases in crimes, but considering everything that our men and women had to deal with out there this summer with all the deployment, all the new people coming downtown and the fact that we were losing officers all, all the time, I think it was, it was a success. And we now were moved on to the fall for our fall plan to, as we try to get our numbers from, or the red to the black so we can end up with less victims this year than we had last year.
So one of the things you, you talked about in, in the opening statement was the 15% increase in, in handgun arrests, especially downtown, that was successful. But we also noted that there was displacement as a result of that. Can, can you talk to me a little bit about why that happens? I think I know why that happens, but I'd love to hear from you, but even more, I'd love to hear how we deal with displacement. And specifically, are there any other ways to deal with displacement outside of more boots on the ground?
The, the way we dealt with it is what, what happens, we look at our crime numbers every day. Actually, we look at it not even every day, we look at it almost immediately as it comes through our, our phones whenever told. And we can maneuver and, and change people and move people around and we constantly do it. Where we call and say, hey, we need something just popped here, had a couple robberies here, let's move some resources here. So what we saw early in the summer is we had some issues downtown. Patrol put together the daily downtown deployment. We started, we stabilized the downtown area, but then we started to see rises in Fells Point and Federal Hill. So then we broke off some of those pieces and put them over in those two places.
Question for the additional manpower to meet the, the handgun arrest need in downtown. Did we pull from the surrounding neighborhoods to do that? Or how, how did that work, I think is?
No, we didn't pull from surrounding neighborhoods. What we did is we, we tried to optimize what we had. So with our other bureaus, we created a downtown deployment. So those, those units that would normally not have a patrol function, put on a unit, put on a uniform and were able to be deployed downtown. What we saw in the later months with downtown area, as the numbers started to decrease in reference to crime, we were then able to redeploy them to other areas, as Lieutenant Colonel Herzog said, Fells Point, Federal Hill to the block. So it, it added us the ability to optimize our appearance and our visibility. I think as, as the deputy was alluding to, the increase or what we saw for, when for us was, as he said, with the 520, 6560 warrants that were served in reference to the summer deployment, in reference to arrests, we charged, overall adult charges went up by 12% in reference to arrests during that period. We recovered 15% more guns as compared to 2021. We had 40% more gun arrests compared to 2021, as well as the reduction of homicides in that downtown area decreased by almost 1%. So we saw some, some increases in that, which we, we relate to successes. And we're going to continue that, that model of occupying spaces through visibility, targeting the right individuals and that, and the correct geography.
Okay. Thank you. And one last question before I hand it off to my colleagues was around the warrant apprehension. And so I noted, one of the big pushes that we had over the summer was more warrant apprehension. It looks like we, that showed some success or at least I understand it did.
Yes, that, that, doing the, the warrant apprehension, we, the 560 warrants that they had and the fact that they had 400 this year, the last year, and we used some of the, the money to facilitate, because what happened is all during this time while these numbers were going up, their staffing numbers were going down because in a, in a period of about two months, we lost eight detectives that, who retired or resigned and moved on, but most of them retired and moved on to another, next adventure in their life. But we were still able to do that and we were able to do that through different initiatives. We constant, we saw that coming. So what we did is we partnered with Patrol. And I say we because I was in CID at the time, so I was handling another part. We partnered with, with Patrol and we moved resources from Patrol to come and help fill some of the vacancies that WATF had. So we went out and did the, did the warrants, but also that gave them the knowledge that they could see how our WATF detectives look and some of the technical things that they do to track down the wanted criminals. And they can go back and treat everyone else, but it was partnership with them, partnership with the US Marshals. And of course, the, the money was a big, a big boost because we were able to have those same detectives who were working WATF on their regular job would actually stay and do certain warrants that they couldn't get to that, that day and come in on different times to do, to facilitate everything that they did throughout the year and they continue to do.
And one of the initiatives, I think that the deputy is mentioning is the beginning of the summer, in June, we had our North Star Initiative, which we would partner with the Marshals, which helps us to, that was a month-long initiative where we are focusing on those most violent crime drivers that are, you know, the offenders of our homicides, our shootings, robberies, aggravated assaults, and most certainly domestics and aggravated, I said aggravated assaults and firearms as well. And from that initiative in June, which was the start of the summer, we had 263 arrests. And which is interesting with the, with the Marshals for us for this year, normally they do one big initiative. We've actually had the pleasure of having them for two other initiatives as well, as well. But those were for the early months and we are gearing up to be doing another initiative coming soon for winter months as a part of some of that strategy as well.
Sir, I, I don't want, you know, the deputy, the deputy mayor kind of, Deputy Commissioner breeze over it, but I want to say that by cross-training individuals with WATF, it's twofold. You get succession building that when someone from WATF either elevates for a promotion or leaves, you now have someone in the pipeline who is knowledgeable to replace them. But also it's a morale boost to those individuals who normally would not be in the WATF capacity to say, this is what I want to strive to be, this is why I'm going to stay another year because I want to get there. So it's twofold in how we do that. I think the grant, at least for this month, from the second of this month to the 17th, Patrol served, attempted to serve over 1,300 warrants. They were successfully in serving 75 just for this month alone up to the 17th. So we have seen success in this.
And we've built some good relationships, not only with the Marshals, but with all our state partners. We have MSP are embedded in our task forces, school police as a detective who's embedded in WATF. So we use all of our federal partners and all our federal resources to help us as, as we need it with our manpower going down. So it's, everybody has contributed and helped us out a great deal.
I, I'll say this, I think warrant apprehension is, is one of those incredibly important pieces, if only because it is us running the race. And if we don't actually act on that warrant, we'd never cross the finish line. We stop right before it. I'm curious, are we still, the, the, the summer initiatives that we did with our federal partners, are those still continuing? And then even more, have we considered other partnerships, both at the state level, with the Sheriff's Department and otherwise, for additional manpower? I'm not sure if that's something that we can consider in order to make sure that we can continue to get, to cross the finish line.
We have and we will, and like the Sheriff's Department will help us in some of our special events. School police will work some of the baseball games and some of the football games. MSP works, all these other things that we can free up our officers to do, but we do. The Marshals, like the Lieutenant Colonel said, we have, we're trying to get another initiative with them, but they're also strapped for manpower. So, but they've come in and helped us a great deal. MSP has been a good help. They've helped us with some investigative work through our homicide department. They offered helps, help there and we've reached out for it, for them to help us do some of the stuff that frees up our detectives to do other things. So, and of course, we have our federal partners who are embedded with our anti-crime section who have done some really good takedowns and taken some really hardened criminals off the street.
Thank you. I'll hand it off to Councilman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, I've, I've asked a lot of questions in the past about, you know, addressing crime with, in vacant properties. I'm trying to, so, I won't today do that. But I have a question about the, the guns, what we're doing about guns. Now, I know we're, we're making gun arrests and we're, we've, over the, the last year was 800 and some guns that we've been able to get off the street, but they shouldn't be here anyway, especially since they're illegal and I know it's hard to track, you know, ghost guns, but I'm super disturbed and I keep saying it again that, you know, our young people are upteening these illegal guns. And I need to understand a little bit better, you don't have to tell me your full strategy because obviously there's safety concerns and, you know, obviously we don't want to let it go, but like I need to know that somebody's trying to figure out how to make sure that we are not getting these guns into our city.
We, we have a team that's embedded with one of our federal partners, a team of a sergeant, two officers that are embedded with our federal partners. That's their sole task, to trace these guns and find out where they, where they come from and to work with their federal partners because as they cross state lines, that's a different offense. So we do have that in place. We do track, we have a, a young lady, she's a retired officer who tracks the, the guns in our office and we get emails every day about these time to guns incidents from the time it was bought to the time it was used and where it was, came from. And so we can constantly track that. And we use our federal partners to address most of those because they carry more weight than just with, with the city charge when you get a federal charge. But using our federal partners and having that sergeant and two detectives embedded in there has been, has been a, a big help with them. Plus, we also do gun reviews at different times where we work with the state's attorney's office. That's not about getting them out of the city, but what we do, we try to present, present them with better cases. So what we do on a monthly basis, we'll meet with the state's attorney's office and go over some cases that we did or didn't charge with and why. And we can look at the statement of probable cause or, or just whatever it is that caused the issue and then we can correct it. So that's been a huge help to us to present them with better cases. And our men and women are, are getting much better trained every day, so. Some of the, some of the things that we did, we did a, a training last year that I seen help us exponentially. We did a characteristics armed person training that we did a while ago, but a lot of our officers went through that. We just did another investigative and interview training class that our detectives are raving about. Unfortunately, we can send 20 at a time because it's that detail, but all those things to help us present a better case, but the tracking the guns are, is being done.
And I think one other strategy to highlight too, deputy, is our CJ strategy. That's the Crime Gun Intelligence Center. It's not this big, you know, operational type of a, a thing, but literally what we're doing is with, we're partnering with ATF. And through that program or through that strategy, we're able to trace back those casings when we have dischargings or shootings or homicides. That is helping us to make that connectivity across the city for those incidents where maybe we're not looking, we're just looking at geography, but it helps us to trace back who has the gun, trace the gun and be able to connect those incidents. So when we are now finding out or developing who those persons of interest are or those suspects, now we can connect every single one of, one of those cases and bring them forward for prosecution as well. So that has been huge. Primarily, we were operating in Western. We have already expanded down into the Southwest. It is very simple as just our evidence collection when officers respond to the scene to make sure that we're collecting every single thing that is now processed through ATF's, you know, machine that matches those casings. And from there, we're able to match a lot of connectivity. And in our, one of our intelligence meetings, this is also where we are able to really have that discussion with our intelligence, our intel officers, homicide detectives, our shooting detectives, even with some of our robberies when we've seen those incidents as they occur, to make those matches for us to sit down and say, share that intelligence. Are these the same suspects? Are we looking for the same people? How were our victims connected to some of these incidents? How was the, the suspects connected to some of these incidents? And there we're able to come out with better, I think prosecution processes as well.
And one last thing to just throw in the mix there is ghost guns. And Mr. Chairman came down to Annapolis with us last year to help us with our strategy around ghost guns. And just to put it into perspective, last year at this time, we had collected 318. This year, we're at 355. They remain a huge concern for us. And so that is something that we're going to still have to be thinking, we're going to be, have to be thinking with you all, you know, what else can we be doing around these products, you know? Because it could be a kid who buys it and then puts, and you and I, I think, have had conversations about this, you know? What do you do if a kid steals his, his parents' credit card and buys it and builds it? You know, we can't stop him from doing it, you know? So I, I think we really, really have to be creative because those are seriously problematic.
Yeah, well, we know the city is suing one of the manufacturers, which I think is hopefully going to be helpful if other states jump on board and cities jump on board. I just, I just worry that, you know, there was a lag time where we weren't doing as, as much as we could on the guns and, and now I got 15-year-olds and they're using them. And it is frustrating for everybody. So it's, it's, it's how do we make sure that we, that folks don't have access to this? I mean, GPRS is going to be super important because we're going to, and, and the work that has to be done to show that people can't solve problems with, shouldn't be solving problems with guns. But I, I worry because when people have the guns, they're going to, you know, might use them. And so it's a matter of how do we make sure, you know, that, you know, if, if, that the illegal ones aren't coming in towards state.
And Councilwoman, if I could just put a finer point on that, not only is it frustrating, it's scary.
Yeah.
When you have kids who cannot solve conflict and are armed, you know, that is incredibly scary, not just for us, not just for you, but for our residents. And we feel that.
We had, I mean, we had a horrible tragedy at Murvo for, and that was what happened. So it's a very serious thing that I'm very impatient about resolving, and I think all of us are as well. So my second question, and I wasn't going to bring any JHU police questions, but I guess since my colleague brought one, I'm going to go ahead. It sounds like, it sounds like you're ready to sign this thing. And that seems a little frustrating to me because, you know, there's still a lot of people, at least in my district, that are, have a lot of concerns. Sure, there's the sort of reputation of the, of the university, which I know they're working on changing, but there's still, you know, I have, I have a lot of concerns about this.
Yep.
But it sounded to me like you all were ready to go ahead and do this.
Nothing is final at all. I want to make that abundantly clear. We have not agreed to anything. The draft that is out in the public is for, it's a starting point to hear what the community says. We had to have a draft. There had to be something out there for folks to react to. The mayor is clear. No one is to agree to anything. No one is to sign anything. We are not there yet. And we are in, I think we may have scheduled your briefing. I know we're working on a couple of different things. Emails have been fast and furious the last couple of days. And, you know, and I think, and we're excited about having that conversation with you because I think not only we're going to get your feedback, but we're going to get the feedback that you've been getting from your constituents, which I think is really important for us to hear. And certainly with, for any of the other council members, we are absolutely happy to schedule that. I know, Councilman, you're, you know, part of your district is in there, we're happy to brief you, but it, it doesn't matter if you're, if it's in your district. We're happy to have a conversation, give you our perspective, talk about kind of our perspective regarding the consent decree and, and all of the other really, really important points.
And one of, one of the big things too, before, before, I want to go back to guns is, is our lab is one of the best labs in the country. We get our, we get our, our comparisons back in 24, 48 hours on most every cases. So we can track what casings came from what guns and what cases are linked. And then every Wednesday, we get about a half an hour of our meeting dedicated simply to, we have an analyst who comes in and simply goes over that with our intel officers. This gun is related to here and we can track them back to where, what cases it was used on. And when we recover one, we can go back and say, well, this gun was used on this crime. It'll, could help us save, solve a case. It has in different cases, it has in murders, has in shootings where we get the suspect with the weapon and can trace it to the weapon that was actually used to commit the crime.
Thank you for that. I think that just, I'm going, thank you for that. I appreciate that. I didn't realize that that was such a quick timeframe.
Yes.
Which I think is very helpful in terms of trying to get the right information out there and to get, you know, what we need for that. So I appreciate that. And I do appreciate that we've, you know, been able to get from 500 guns to 830. There's thousands out there. And so I think that's, you know, that's our frustration. And then just going back quickly to the JHU piece. And then just going back quickly to the JHU piece, one of, I'm not going to go through everything today, but, you know, one of my concerns is about hiring. We are having a hard time hiring officers to the BPD to be able to then go to the areas that actually really need it most and have wanted it, you know? And JHU can hire 100 officers, that's what the law says, and they will be deployed in, on three campuses or near, on or near, right? Because we'll get them in the neighborhoods as well. And there's a whole other thing there, but I'm just going to stick with hiring right now. I'm just going to go with hiring.
I do want to stay on topic. I don't want to interrupt you if only because I did allow the other question before, but because I do have a conflict in this matter, I think it'd probably be best if we save this for the hearing when we do have it. So, if it's okay, would you like to hold the question or have a brief answer from the department? I do want to make sure I respect your ability to ask.
You know what? I think that it probably makes sense to have, we'll have a separate discussion.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Cohen.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Glover.
Just one last question. With the MOU that you have, what happens, do you have to re-adopt that if, you know, voters decide to go and support, you know, the local control this upcoming election? Do you have to re-adopt the MOU? Just want to get clarification on that.
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
If that were the case, every single contract that we have would have to be reevaluated. So, no, it won't be a problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I have two more questions. And one is to biggie pack on a sort of idea or statement made by Councilman Glover a little bit earlier with regard to increases in crime in other parts of the city. So, we noted we've seen a significant decrease in crime in the Western District that partly due to the group violence reduction strategy, which is great, although we still know that we've seen that increase in shootings and one, you know, one person decrease in homicide. So, we still tend to be on par with where we've been in the past. I'm really curious with that in mind, where we're seeing the increase, why we're seeing the increases and what we, what we're doing about it in the interim until we are able to expand the GPRS program.
It actually depends on, because right now, we're seeing, we just had a meeting about this with, we've had an increase in the Northeast District. And we track where the shootings have occurred and where the shooters may have come from or with dispute. So, we constantly meet about that Monday, Wednesday, Friday. If not every hour or so, on Evertell, we can pass things out because we had the shooting on 29th Street and then they had one yesterday in Bowley. So, those are different things that we have to shift. Same district, Northeast, two totally separate parts of the district that he, that Dave Major has to manage. So, what we will do, we'll just send him extra resources to try to manage both of those positions. Earlier in the year, it was the Southern District that was, that was causing a lot of our issues. We moved resources there. The Major got that under control in Brooklyn. I don't want to say it's under control, but he, we've got a grip on that. And then we did have a spike in the Western for a little while and then our resources moved there. But one thing that GPRS does also is their enforcement is mainly in the Western, but we've gone to the Southwest and other districts when the person who committed the crime lives somewhere else. We will go somewhere else and we rely on the district commanders and the chief of patrol and chief of detectives to keep an eye on where the constant shift is. Because it's a constant shift, when I did a district, I had four different areas that would go up. Kevin did the Central and Monique did the Southern. We had to constantly adjust and the only way to do that is communicate up the chain and let us send you different resources where we could send like WATF, let's do a warrant initiative here. Let's do a car stop or car traffic initiative here. So, we do all those things to combat those even though our resources, but we have to rely on what we have. And we will use our federal partners to help us. And we do use school police. We use the sheriffs at Fells Point that free up some of our officers to go elsewhere. Perfect example is two of our officers working, this has happened a couple of times in Fells Point, walking foot, they get two handgun violations at two separate, two separate weekends just by walking foot and observing different things. So, the resources that we move usually are successful. And if they're not, and the crime goes down, we just move them around somewhere else until we stabilize an area, but it's a constant shift. And that's all of us working together to figure out where we need to move the resources that we have to combat the issues that we're fighting for that day.
Council Chair, the deputy is correct in that, but, so not only the mechanisms we have placed, in place with Police Stat, ComStat, our weekly crime meetings, we amongst ourselves as commanders and executives have an Evertell system where the crimes come out. And what happens is for myself and my team is when you start to see patterns, when you start to see an initial event and then an hour later or whatever it is, another event in the same district or another event in the city, we get amongst ourselves and say, what's going on? What do we need to get in front of? How are we deploying for it? So, not only do we have it at the executive level where I'm asking my team that, they're pushing it down to their commanders of what you're seeing, what was done prior to the incident, what was doing at the incident, what's going to be done after the incident. But we also, we can't just allow it to be just human nature to ask these questions. We backed it up with our data-driven strategy where DDS is analyzing it as well to see if through their process or they find connectivity between individuals or their group affiliations, there are other things going on that we may not see. I may have a feeling what's going on in the Northeast, but then data-driven strategies will come back with analytics saying, yes, there's something going on in the Northeast and it appears to be this group or this individual. So, this is happening real time as well as throughout the week and throughout the month.
Yeah, I think, as I think about GPRS and how it works, your points are exactly right. We're looking at networks. We're looking at groups and those groups don't necessarily stop at our district boundaries, although we're focused on the primary issues within those boundaries. The groups go well beyond those boundaries. But that also leaves us in a situation by which we have other groups in other parts of the city, which may or may not be getting the attention that they need. And I think that's what I'm trying to understand. What, it's funny, as you explained how we've been responding, I think it's great that we're responding, but we're always behind the ball. We're playing whack-a-mole. And I want to be more thoughtful about how we can get ahead of these things, realizing that we have a ton of intelligence on groups. We, you know, what can we do to get ahead of the ball in that regard as opposed to always being reactionary?
Yes, sir. Sometimes it seems like we're constantly reacting. We have to react to what happens, but we can't possibly measure what we prevent. So, our, each of our districts has district action teams that are embedded in somewhere in their, in their district. If they have, if the area that they're in is, doesn't have something and then something happens over in Bowley's or DeChum, they'll move from there to there, but they could have prevented whatever was in that area. We deploy our mobile metro unit, we deploy our SWAT teams to these different areas and they may have prevented something that we, we just can't measure that. But it does seem like we're reactive because we have to move resources, but those resources are already out there working somewhere preventing something. We just have to move them to where we did have something so we can put that fire out and then move on to something else.
So, I think, you know, to the deputy's point, the methodology with the shooting reviews that we have and the group audits of identifying those individuals most likely to be a victim or to be, or to victimize, we go after them. The deputy alluded to, you know, the crime drivers in the district, those dat teams are identifying them. That's being followed up with not only our weekly crime meetings, but at ComStat, at the very end, there's an intel portion where we talk about intel sharing, which you should know, how it affects another district, what that district should be aware of because maybe he's playing over here, but he's laying his head over there. He's got a girlfriend in this area or they go to this club. So, it gets that minute of where these individuals are traversing through the city. So, that's how we're doing it as far as that in reference to tracking those individuals as well as other investigatory tools to extract those individuals.
And technology has helped us a great deal. We've got more LPR cars on the street. Matter of fact, we've got more cars on the street, more new cars, the new, the new white explorers are more and more of those you see out there. So, now, because I remember when I was an officer, we used to fight for cars. Now, the officers have quality cars with all the tools that they need. They have license plate readers that we use. A lot of different technology that we can use to help combat some of these issues. And our district commanders have the things that we never had when we were commanders. They have dashboards that they can look in real time, look at their officers, see what they're doing, see where they need to deploy. So, they have a lot, technology has increased dramatically over the last couple of years that gives us the tools. And one of the biggest things is Axon. We finally aren't writing handwritten reports anymore and they are allowing us to build a new case management system so we can move away from Lotus Notes. And when those things are built, our intel sharing is going to just increase dramatically over, as we start putting more and more data in there.
And I think with the GVR strategy, it helps us to look at groups differently than what we were. We were just thinking and looking at groups, oh, they're associated, you know, hey, Mo, Kevin, Michelle and Jack are hanging out, so they must all be involved in all of the violence or the other things that we're seeing. But we also know that through social media, these social networks are like webs across the city. No one is staying in those boundaries like it was when we grew up. Just as Colonel Jones said, you know, growing up East Side of Baltimore, you know, you didn't go across the Vadoch to the West Side unless family was there and they kind of vetted you in to say, hey, it's okay for you to come here. We're not seeing that as much as we used to. So, now with those social networks, through that GVR strategy, when we do those shooting reviews, what we're able to see is who else is associated with the victim and if we had made an arrest, that suspect. And who else do we need to talk to besides just the victim or the suspect when we have that messaging? And that is how we're able now to better service those individuals with supports and maybe some other services that they need, or it may just be that, hey, listen, we're going to continue to investigate you for law enforcement purposes.
Thank you. Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a question about that. It's interesting you brought that up. Are we no longer using the terminology org charts or developing org charts from a CID perspective in the way that we have historically?
We moved to a different name for it. Basically, it's going to be groups instead of org charts. It's being redeveloped so that we're more, we're compliant. And what this is going to do is allow us to share more information throughout, through with our partners. So, it's something that we're building, we're building out.
What's the thought process behind that? I'm assuming Colonel Brown hit on that?
Yes, sir. When we looked at some of the ratings and some of the criteria that was used involved in creating some of the org charts, the methodology just was not making sense. Like I mentioned earlier, we could just be a group that is now standing in a particular location and now, hey, we become members or associated with this group and now we become listed into an org chart. That doesn't necessarily mean that that's what we're seeing now. What we're seeing is a little different in how groups are associating, who's involved with violence. It could be some individuals who geographically or geographically are in one location, but they're not necessarily the ones that's driving the violence. So, say for instance, Mo normally hangs in Cherry Hill. It's violence in Cherry Hill. Now, Mo is back to Ashland and Washington and it's violence there. I go to O'Donnell Heights, it's violence there. So, what we're starting to see is where certain people, because that is a people, GPRS is a people-based strategy, where that person or one individual in particular may travel is violence that is associated with that person. And I think that we've seen some of the successes. We're very hopeful for the successes that we're seeing over in the Western and we're trying to, of course, emulate that across the city. They have been more, I think, definitive in methodology and how it helps us to better focus on who we should be looking at, whether is that individual associated with the violence or the individual that's driving the violence.
So, might I understand that the larger criminal organizations have become more decentralized and it's more a free agent model as opposed to a team model?
I wouldn't say so much that. I would say that we just have to do a better job of tracking, tracking who is associated with whom, because what would happen, say, for example, we put an org chart in our database, the way we may have come up with that org chart is someone was hanging with someone else or something like that. Now, there's a certain criteria that we have to meet in order to put those together to make it a more solid connection. And then once we get all that, all that information put into the case management system, that can be shared with the other agencies around us and we're going to be able to share their information. So, instead of operating in silo like we have been with just our information and having to reach out, we'll be able to use the case management system built by our federal partners to be able to look at all that information and they can look at ours and take that information and use it.
To the deputy's point, I think he was spot on with saying soloed. I think through growth and maturity and best practices, we realized that a lot of the organizations that we identified by the streets that they operated on, we look solely at that a lot of times as being the organization. But we didn't take into consideration all of the other spatter legs that came from that is, I may deal operate here, but my grandmother lives over there, so I know those 10 guys from that area as well. And we all go to this school and guess what? We all follow this rapper and we've got this organization on social media where now we're this rap group too. So, there's just so many layers to this that now this allows us to look at everything and not solely as one organization in one area, but look at the many leagues of this larger conspiracy or larger network.
And how it connects to other agencies as well, our surrounding counties, because some of that connectivity isn't just staying just in the city. We are seeing that they are operating in surrounding counties and now that allows us all to say, hey, listen, Baltimore City has an investigation as well. Anarodno County has an investigation. We need to team up to see what it is that we're missing. And I think that is the biggest plus for us in moving that way.
And our detectives have to go through training before they can actually use the system. They have to get a certification. It's not a very long training, but that, that's how much we want to make sure that we do it right and when we put the information in. That's the only way we're going to be able to put the information in. They give them training on case management and how we do groups so that we can share that information throughout the state and with the feds.
And the use of the term group as opposed to org chart, that I assume does not have a direct relationship to the G in GPRS, correct? It's just, that's what we're referring to it as now?
No, because it's used by, it's not, it's not just going to be used with GPRS. It's actually put together by one of our federal partners. That's how we.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. I've just got one, one question and I think I've been, I appreciate you guys for trying as best as you can and answered some of the stuff that we were asking. One of the ones, this may be a kind of difficult question to answer for a number of reasons, but I'm going to ask it anyway, because I think it's important towards our opportunity to learn from this, is what do you think hasn't gone well in, over the summer that we can learn from? What are some of our strategies that did not quite pan out the way we expected? Not because they're bad strategies, maybe we didn't have, whatever the case is, but are there, are there any lessons that we learned about strategies that did not work quite as well as we thought over the summer? Any examples of that?
So, for me, and I think the agency is, we have to realize that we have to be more real time. I think realizing that what we have in place with our people base and our geography-based strategies works, but it's still indicative of people getting that information out. What I want to see and would like to see between my district commanders is better cooperation. Sometimes there are border issues that may not be automatically and immediately identified and before you know it, it spreads and now you have two districts that are involved. Or you have a border initiative where a district commander, you know, self-preservation being paramount is I'm going to put everything on my border and you're going to keep it on yours and you're still going to be dealing with a lot of the issues. So, sometimes, you know, I get it. I was the central commander. Rich was Northeast. Mo had the Southern. But at some point, the district boundary has to stop and we have to realize that it is a citywide problem. It is a problem, it may be you today, but it could be me tomorrow and identifying what are the best situations or having those ground-level conversations that I hear happening, but I don't know happened to the extent that we had it when we were commanders of troubleshooting issues as commanders evenly across the board. If Mo had something, a carjacking pattern, if Rich had something in reference to stolen autos, I'm dealing with it now. So, instead of starting at So instead of starting at step A, Mo says, hey, look, E worked for me. And Rich says, you know what? I did T. Instead of letting me troubleshoot and work my way through it, I think there has to be a collaboration of everybody, all hands on deck. And I'm not saying it's not, but I just would like to see it improved among the district commanders. Because there is a level of, you know, this is my district, but there's also some competitiveness, but also, look, competitiveness out the window and not taking care of your own district. But, look, it's a border initiative. Let's get this together. Let this work. And also, just the staffing issues. You can't really just, I don't want to glaze over that. We talked about it earlier, is there are a lot of districts that are dealing with a lot of ad hoc events that pop up, a lot of large events that pop up, and, you know, sometimes they're robbing Peter to pay poll because they know their priorities are in these zones in reference to this violence. But I have this large-scale event where I have to have a public safety commitment to it as well. So now I'm kind of just crossing my fingers and hoping that something doesn't happen, where reaching out to our other, you know, city agencies and other resources to better utilize everybody in this crime fight, so it is truly this co-productive approach.
That's a great point. We just have to do, we have a lot of young commanders, a lot of young captains, a lot of young majors, and we've got to mentor, teach, and train them if they don't know something. Because I know fear of the unknown, one of my biggest problems is I would never ask for help. So that's, we've got to have them ask for help when they need help. So that's incumbent upon us to get our commanders to where Major Thacker is like, and she doesn't want to leave him, lose him. And a lot of, a lot of people don't want to lose their major, captain. So we want everybody to be, to be up to their game as we move forward and try to end the year good, on a good note.
I appreciate that. And thank you both for trying to answer that question. It wasn't an easy one. But I do think it's important that when we have these opportunities to look back on specifically initiatives, short-term plans and otherwise, that we ask those questions to understand what we need to change going forward. So I am out of questions. Any other questions from the committee? Seeing no questions, we're going to go into recess. Thank you.